Education meeting in the budget workshop for the Taconoroga Central School District for Tuesday, March 26, 2013. All quarters please. I have emergency evacuation instructions. Mr. McDonald?
That exits from the back and off to both sides.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, and I still ask that, as I always do, if you keep our servicemen and women in your thoughts, as they are in this country and around the world, in keeping us safe, so I ask that, keep them safe. So, continue with informational items and public participation. Anyone that would like to address the board, please? Mr. Dietrich, Mr. Bartlet? Don't fight over it, we got all night.
I just wanted to give the board a quick update at the January, I believe it was a January board meeting, I reported that the backpack program had started, and we've started with thirty, thirty-one kids in the elementary school. And I'm pleased to report, give you an update today, that we, just this week, got another grant, this one from the Stewart's Corporation. That's pushed us out to the top in terms of funding, and we're now moving forward to expand the backpack program, putting another fifteen kids on, so, beginning April 12th, I believe is the date, which will be the first weekend after the spring break, we'll be moving forward with forty-five kids going home for the weekend, their backpacks stuffed with nutritious food for the weekend.
Very good. Appreciate that update, Mr. Bartlet. Thank you. Mr. Dietrich?
Just wanted to come here personally to thank you. I would say, more than the last dozen years, we've held a run-night basketball tournament here in Taconoroga, and it's for the Fourth of July fundraiser. When they first approached me, a dozen years ago, I thought, what, you know, great idea to have an run-night basketball tournament here, and at the same time, what a great idea to get some of the players, previous players, back. They haven't been back in time, they haven't seen the school, they haven't seen a lot of their classmates. But, you know, we showed up Saturday, the gym was perfect, the beaches were out, Don did a great job, his staff did a great job. John, I want to thank you, and certainly the School Board of Education for allowing us to do that. It was a great event, we raised over six hundred dollars for the Fourth of July, and we couldn't do it without Bill Bill in the gym, so... I was gonna send a thank you note, and I said, no, I think about the time I came here personally to thank you, maybe four or five years since I've done that. But, we couldn't do it without you. Thank you very much. The other thing I wanted to mention very quickly, and I know it's a, you're in a very tough budget year, and every year is a very, very tough budget year. You're in a very tough position, I know John's in a very tough position. The last Quanis Club meeting, John gave an incredible presentation, and I got thinking about that, and I just, I don't need to remind you of this, because you don't need reminding of this at all, and sometimes I, I'm a little bit passionate, sometimes I bleed purple, and so I'm a little prejudiced, I know that, but when I was supervisor, I did a lot of traveling throughout the state of New York. And I don't care where I went, if I had a name tag on, Robert Dietrich, Tom at Taconoroga, this school district is so well-recognized throughout the state, through all that they do for our kids, it's incredible. The reputation of this school is impeccable, and I just wanted you to know that, I've heard that everywhere I went. So, please, I know it's a budget year, I know it's a real tough year, but you've got incredible reputation for what we do for our kids, so, again, it's just something to put out there. Thank you very much for this last weekend, and great job doing it. Thank you.
Anyone else want to address before we continue on with the budget discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Same as last presentation, not only with the budget, but the board agenda is online. If you want a hard copy, please let us know, we're trying to save paper, and if you want a hard copy of the budget presentations, please let me know, or let Mrs. Gere know, and we can get that for you. But, we're trying to cut back on use of paper, so, everything will be posted tomorrow on the website, and obviously you can follow along with what's up in front of us. So, similar agenda, gonna update folks where we are, and talk about continued timeline, some things that, I want, folks that worked here, last time, I want to kind of, speaking to Mr. Dietrich's comments, talk about some of the really good things that are happening here with our staff and with our kids, and you can never get too tired of saying those things. Some of the realities of the budget, some changes that have been made since we last had a meeting. I will talk a little bit about state aid. As of right now, we only have an executive proposal, although I do know there is a budget agreement in place, we just haven't seen any runs from the state. I have some ideas of some things that may be happening, but to the extent in how they're gonna impact us, we don't know yet. And then our status to date, I'm gonna review some of those talking points that I mentioned, not only at our meeting here, but some of the things I talked about when I was at the Quanis meeting earlier this, this week, or last week. And then our next steps, so... Real quickly, timeline, this meeting was supposed to take place last week, but we had the snowstorm, so we're at the 26th, and then we have another workshop on the 16th in Hague, another workshop and hearing on the 25th in budget adoption, a mandatory budget hearing on the 14th of May, and a statewide budget vote on the 21st. So, in talking about our programs and things that are doing well, and I will say this, I've observed almost every elementary teacher so far this year, we've got a few left, and it's incredible to watch the things that they do in terms of, in their classroom work. This new evaluation system is extremely difficult to deal with, but they've been very good, and I know, I'm talking to the administrators at the high school and middle school, same thing, but it's nice to see that firsthand with our folks in the trenches, and continuing to do the good work in the classroom, and still being able to be in compliance with the new APPR thing. But, all our elementary schools in good standing, we've met AYP at all levels, very high attendance rate, have a very good reading series called Storytown. One shift in that program that we're making is, it's about sixty percent fiction, the shift in the New York State Common Core is going to more nonfiction, so we have a lot of teachers bringing in their own materials. MyMath is a great math program, teachers are doing very well with that. We're continuing with our positive behavior intervention supports, which is programs and strategies to help improve student behavior, especially when we have students, an increasing population of kids coming from poverty. And our response intervention, it's a statewide mandate that, what was basically this, is that all our teachers need to do everything they can within the classroom before they get referred to special education, so it is a cost-saving piece. You can see it happening at all three buildings, it's been successful at all three buildings, not at one-hundred percent addresses some of our special ed issues, because another part of our special ed problem is the increase in the number of kids that are autistic, and so, even though we've had less referrals on certain disability areas, the growth in the autistic population has counteracted our classification rate. Similar, at the middle school, in good standing, meeting adequately, nearly progress, once again, ninety-six percent attendance rate. And yesterday, I was actually up in Essex, yesterday afternoon, for a meeting, and it was on the CFES college for every student, which Taconoroga, Mr. Dietrich was on that committee, I should say, good thing you showed up tonight, Bob. We were the first school in the Adirondacks to be part of this program, over fifteen years ago, and we are still recognized as one of the highlight of the schools. And I didn't ask Heather to come tonight, but she hosted, or coordinated, a visit from a group of Hawaiian students this past week, and they did all kinds of activities, they stayed in Taconoroga, they visited our schools, they did some college visits, they got to go tubing, it was really to see for Taconoroga, so, you know, that's one of those areas where we've been able to provide our kids opportunities that they wouldn't normally have within our normal community and school day, and we are recognized by that organization as a school of distinction for the things that happen, and so, it's really great to see that big place and for those kids to do that. And then, once again, the PBIS RTI process is also taking place in the middle school. High school also in good standing, meeting AYP, we have over fifty percent of our students taking advanced placement courses, that's the highest in this region, I can tell you that right now, it's the highest. And the reason is that we have high expectations for our kids, we get the middle school kids to take the decision of taking the higher course as opposed to taking the easy way out, especially their senior year. And it's been the philosophy of our staff that, when a student is a senior, they can't have an easy, they can have a good year, but it's gotta be challenging, because their following year, their freshman year in high school and college, they're gonna be sitting next to kids from all different other experiences, and we need to make sure they're prepared. And so, it's great to see those numbers of kids taking those courses. We also have a lot of other opportunities through North Country and SUNY, where kids get college credit, and I had a parent tell me, if you remember last time, that it was great to have their child graduate and then be able to start their college career as a sophomore. Big savings to the parents, and shows the success of those programs. We haven't seen our winter sports numbers yet, but every team in our fall sports earned academic distinction, meaning that the average grade for the team was over ninety percent. We know that, we've seen we've been recognized by U.S. News &amp; World Report as a top district, top two, top two percent in the country, as a silver medal school, and once again, the PBIS RTI program, very successful in this building as well. As a district, we did meet the governor's deadline on APPR, and we will continue to work on that, that's part of the new budget, that this will continue. We host a lot of community events, including the senior citizens luncheon, and I mentioned that last time, because it was fresh in our minds, over two-hundred-and-seventy senior citizens sponsoring with the Quanis, having a really nice, enjoyable meal at our facility, and it's all community, all great levels, every building participates in this program. We had a focus on supporting our veterans and tributes to them, Mr. Lang class organized a care package piece earlier in the year, and then followed that up not too long ago, and we had a graduate who was turning twenty-one and was homesick, and his family let us know about that, and his class was able to put together a birthday package for him. So, a lot of stuff like that is happening with our kids, recognizing the sacrifices that our military is making for us, so, you know, this is all part of the learning experience. I talked about some of the other programs that are taking place this year, and I bring these up because these are programs that we have taken on at no expense to the taxpayer, there's been either grants written or other ways to implement these programs without impacting the tax levy, and actually, in some cases, saving some money. The first was that, we saved three-thousand, hundred thousand dollars this year by bringing three autistic students, and it ended up being four, because we had someone that we didn't know was gonna be in the program, to our district from Bosse. Certainly, it's a financial savings, but the real benefit is for the kids, they're not traveling to Miami on the bus every day, their parents are much more comfortable with them being in a regular head setting, which is the least restrictive environment, and is the program they should be in anyway. So, it's been a win-win that way, but it's been a lot of work from our staff to pull this off without adding any staff. Similar with the alternative high school, one of the areas that we are concerned about is our dropout rate, we have some kids that are just, right now, are the square pavement, the round hall, and they are not only not coming to school, or were not coming to school, but they were being disrupted when they would come. So, we got a grant, and it's being housed at the Army, we're staffing it with our existing staff, we have, you saw a presentation at the last board meeting of folks that have been part of that, it's continued to do well, and it is addressing our dropout rate, we had at least one graduate from the program already, who is now a high school graduate, now a dropout, and we're hoping to have some more as the program continues. The marine technology program continues to do well, we should be hosting an open house fairly soon, sponsored by Bosse's. We have students from Crown Point and Bolton coming here, it is a little bit of, it does provide a little bit of revenue, they do pay a rent on the facility they use, and we're hoping to expand our program, get more kids from our community and also from surrounding communities for that to continue. And I just mentioned this grant last time, that is an example of some of the things that our administrators are trying to do to support, but we can't do without a budget. Mr. Don here found an outstanding music grant, a performance, and it wasn't just a performance, these people actually worked with our kids after the performance or before, during a three-day period at all three buildings, was able to get it covered through a grant, and it's just the kind of innovative things that we're trying to do to make up for the stuff that we used to be able to do out of our budget. So, that stuff's continuing on a daily basis, monthly basis, yearly basis, and we're still looking for other ways to support things. So, getting into the budget, and I showed you this last time, this is a five-year budget comparison, we have a five-year spending average of just over two percent, a five-year living average of three-point-seven percent. The big change factor is last year, obviously, we had a spending decrease, a six percent spending decrease, which leveled out that five-year spending increase. It's still resulting in three-point-five, six percent levy increase, but, you know, you'll see with the state aid situation, that is, that's where our problem is lying right now. Our enrollment is looking to stay fairly consistent for the next two years, and that's a factor that goes into the budget conversation. And there's some other factors that are kind of unique to this particular budget year that I did review before, and I'm gonna have Mrs. Gossi talk about what they do impact our spending. There's been some changes to these pieces here since we last met, so, we'll talk about those in a minute. But, just in general, we have the TRS, the payments that we made to the Teachers Retirement System, it's, was a pretty hectic increase from last year to this year, same thing with the ERS, is the Employees Retirement System, and those totals just alone are about four-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. Now, there was a proposal that was out in February about flattening the TRS contribution piece, that is still an item on the state budget agreement, and, but there's the adjustment, there's been some adjustments in the legislation, so I'm gonna have Mrs. Gossi talk about that briefly.
We talked last time about the TRS proposal and the smoothing factor that they're talking about, as you can see in the factors listed above, the change of the TRS pension rate to a sixteen-point-two-five percent rate is a thirty-seven percent increase in that rate, so even if we were taking the same base to calculate that expense, it would be increasing by thirty-seven percent right off the start of the calculation. So, as districts were trying to deal with this, there was legislation proposed to provide a smoothing factor. We talked last time that there were still a lot of questions about this smoothing factor, and it was still based as a proposal. Today, it still is a proposal, but it does look as though, if the budget goes through, that there will be a TRS smoothing factor, however, it has changed from the original proposal. The original proposal was to take the sixteen-point-two-five, change it to a twelve-point-five percent, and you stayed at that rate for twenty to twenty-five years. There was a lot of concerns by business officials, because the data we've been being given over the last few years is that TRS was pretty much tapped out, that we were going to start to see a decline in that rate, so we were concerned that we were going to take this saving factor right now, and we pay significantly enough for the next twenty years that we were fixed into that rate. I think they heard those concerns, because they have changed the wording of the smoothing proposal, it's no longer going from sixteen-point-two-five to twelve-point-five, they're taking it from sixteen-point-two-five to fourteen percent in the new language, and from there, it's a five-year fixed at fourteen versus the twenty to twenty-five that was being discussed in the initial language, and then the districts would just make the fund whole comparatively to anybody who stayed with a variable rate. That was the other concern, is that if any of us took the fixed proposal prior at the twelve-point-five, then we could potentially be absorbing districts' expenses. So, this is, I think, a stronger proposal, because it does allow districts to take advantage of a fixed rate for five years without absorbing other districts' expenditures. And it is still a proposal, we hopefully will know for sure the status of it within the next few days in conjunction with the aid figures, but definitely something that has changed from its initial language and...
That's just for the teachers' retirement?
Just for the teachers' retirement system. Any other questions? Yes?
So, you're saying if it's variable, if people take variable, and we're under that, then we'd have to pay more to make up the difference? There's no, obviously, there's no help for, you know, if we paid forty percent for five years and it's been seven, we're not getting anything back from you?
No, no, I don't, I don't believe so, no. If we're paying fourteen and it's sixteen, no, they're less ready to go. But, again, I haven't, it's still a proposal, we haven't, even with the information I've given, that given, the education and the budget, it's a huge packet, we're just getting this information within the last twenty-four, forty-eight hours, so, as hopefully it's approved, we will give additional information on it to ensure that it is a state proposal, just for you, but we have, at least started to look at that option, so that we can weigh the pros and cons of it.
That is a factor we're gonna have to consider going forward, either way, so we'll show the impact that could have. The other area that affects the budget, besides, you know, collective bargaining, is health insurance. The good news is that we've been in the Plan B program for over four years now, the coverage between the two plans is very similar, is the Plan B program makes people better, it's a little health insurance, there's a higher maximum, there's a higher deductible, and there's a three-tier prescription drug. This is the third consecutive year that there's been a plan, a zero increase in Plan B. At the same time, it's, Plan A is gone up every year. When we first negotiated or went to it, and all our employees are on it, we're the only district, and Bosse's has every employee on this, active employee. When the, this was first started, the difference between Plan A and Plan B was ten percent. It's now almost twenty percent between the two plans, Plan A is over twenty thousand dollars policy, Plan B is sixteen-something. So, it's been a good thing for us as a district, and we're seeing the results, the consortium is seeing the results, because there are other schools that have some other people on this plan, but the consortium is seeing the results of the impact, because people are making good decisions, they're asking good questions, they're not just saying, well, I'll take that prescription, or I'm gonna run to the emergency room, because I, you know, I have this. They're making good health decisions. You may have seen in the paper this week that one of the districts in our area is having a big forum about whether they switch to Plan A or Plan B, and, you know, we've had conversations before, you know, it's been kind of a win-win for our employees, they've had a reduction in what they are paying towards their health insurance premium, and that reduction has stayed for three consecutive years. So, I'm surprised that other schools haven't looked at this concept more closely, but it's been very good for us. We do have employees harvested that are some kind of employees, we have retired folks that are on Plan A, and so their premium, the premium that we pay for those folks is going up four percent, which is less than it has in past years, but still four percent, and so that total is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, those two pieces together are over six-hundred thousand dollars, monies that we have to come up with in terms of the budget that we have no control. So, in terms of the budget concept you're gonna see tonight, it's an update of where we were last time, but there's some assumptions that I want you to think about that went into where we are. Now, the first assumption is that our enrollment is steady, our enrollment numbers are the same, basically, from this year to next year, so we're gonna be servicing the same number of students, theoretically, we'd wanna maintain the same level of program for those students. We have collective bargaining agreements in place, at this point in time, the assumption is staying within the property tax cap formula, and we'll go through that in a minute. Right now, the assumption is that we're looking at the governor's state aid proposal, we do know that will change, but we don't know what it looks like, so right now, we have to go with that assumption. The assumption is that we wanna maintain as much program as possible, but really, the focus has to be, the emphasis has to be on our academic program, because that's really why we're in business. We do have a reality of some transportation needs, we have not purchased buses, we've leased some buses, we did not purchase anything last year, we just renewed our leases, and we've had some inspections that have not gone well over the past month, so we do have some transportation needs that we're gonna have to address, so that's an assumption. We're continuing to review our spending trends, once again, assuming that, looking at this budget, what are fuel costs, where have things leveled off, what is going up, energy, whatever, supplies, et cetera. We need to continue to review costs, any cost-saving measure that we have, but we do have a challenge with that, because the auditor was just here, actually left, I think the day of the budget, last budget meeting, and one of his comments was to us that you are ninety percent accurate on your spending plan, and I, response was, it isn't that good. He said, well, it is, but you don't have any padding. And my response was, how can we look people in the eye and say, oh, by the way, we don't have much padding in our budget, so we're gonna have to increase our spending, which you would never do, because we're trying to be responsible, fiscally responsible. But, the reality of that is, with ninety-eight percent accurate spending plan, there's not much else to go, in terms of having to make cuts, in terms of getting to bridging any gap that's in place. We've gotten there, we've got the low hanging fruit, we've made the cuts that constitute what was not the ninety-eight percent, and that other two percent is really not a lot there, so, that's a challenge going into this budget process, because we don't have a lot of wiggle. So, those are the assumptions that go into what you're gonna see. So, first, starting with the executive piece, and a lot of you folks have seen this before, I'm not gonna go through this whole calculation, the important piece is that when they calculate the budget, the foundation page, your big number, is stayed the same, there's been some incremental increases in other areas, and then, the bottom line is, at the end of everything, the state is telling districts, we have a deficit, and we're gonna take some of that money back from you to cover that deficit. And so, for us, that calculates to five-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars of aid that the state is pulling back. The good news is, is that if you look at that compared to last year, that number is decreasing, and last year decreased from the year before, so, the red, less deficit reduction is getting smaller. The discussion about the legislative budget, the legislative changes to the executive budget are in this area, the gap elimination formula, and so what we're hearing is that the changes that may come, and the new state aid numbers, are gonna address this piece, which for Taconoroga is the most challenging part. This is where, if we're gonna get help, we need to get it right there. What that number's gonna look like, I don't know, but eventually, we need that deficit reduction to go away. If it did, if we were, if that was simply at zero, if we were getting everything we said we would get, or the state says we would get, we would not have the challenges we're facing right now. Once again, the assumption is the New York State Property Tax Cap, it's the second year of the cap, we gotta maintain a two percent threshold, there's a formula that I'll go through to do that, if a district chooses to go above the two percent formula, it would, is supermajority approval, sixty percent. But, and you'll see this in a minute, two percent threshold does not mean two percent, okay, it's gonna mean something different to every school, and usually, it means something higher than two percent. The difference is, if you stay with the... The difference is, if you stay within the 2% threshold, it's a 51%, 50 plus 1%, and if you go above the 2% threshold, it's supermajority, 60% approval. So here's how the cap, the tax cap looks for Tycon Roga this year as of 3/26, and I think we'll see much changes in this. You take the prior year's levy, this current year's levy, which for us is just over 10 million, 10 million. The state builds in a growth factor, they determine that number, it's 1.0036. At this point, Tycon Roga has no pilots, so you don't, does not factor into the, to us. And then they take, then they take out some exemptions on your capital expenses. So that comes out of that prior year levy, and that gives you an adjusted prior year levy. That is the number that is multiplied by 2%. So that's where this 2% concept comes into play. And so that gives you a new 2% number, which is 9.139494 million. You then add back any pilots receivable, as I said before, we don't have any. You then take any available carryover, which we do not have, in terms of the formula, is not something we have. And then you have to add back in the current exemptions, and there are two. The first are the capital expenses, which is similar to line number four. And then the second is, there is a partial exemption for that pension contribution. So part of the pension money does come out in terms of the tax cap. So when you add that all back in, we have an allowable limit of 10.9 million, which is a 6.23% increase. Now, if you remember, I talked about one of the assumptions is that we have transportation needs. Part of those current exemptions, part of that capital exemption is addressing transportation. If we do not put that into the budget, that comes out of the capital piece, which will reduce the capital exemption, and it will also reduce the allowable limit. So if we're, when we're looking at our budget challenges, looking at a number and you say, well, let's pull out transportation, the only impact that has is reducing the amount that can be raised under the 2% formula. Because the way the system is set up, it's exempt from the formula and can be included as part of the formula if you choose to do so. So I don't know if that confused anybody, but that's why that 6.23% is at six. If we pulled what we have for transportation out of it, it'd be about 3.79, I think, or 78. So at a baseline discussion, when you look at the tax levy and the state aid, so 12 trillion tax levy, the additional state aid, our state aid plus the increase, our other revenue, which is our contract with Putnam, some other miscellaneous revenues that come in, you have a $17.9 million base, and when you add the new tax levy, 2% limit to that, that would make our maximum spending plan at 18.6 million. Okay? Now, remember, we talked about TRS and ER, ERS and health insurance. When you add those two numbers together, the 460,000 and 150,000, those two numbers add up to 610,000. So those are, that's money that's already spoken for. Now, we don't, we need to look into the TRS proposal, but if we didn't go with the TRS proposal, we would have to come up with $610,000 just to meet those areas. So if you go backwards to the previous slide, our tax levy limit is only 642,000, so we're already almost beaten up with the tax levy that will allow us to do adjusted health insurance and TRS. So we've had some budget adjustments since our last meeting, and these are things that are current cuts, or cuts that have taken place. We used to have some summer custodial workers, we will not be doing that anymore. We have interim principal in the high school, and he has agreed to continue for another year, and there's some savings there. We have retirement, our librarian has retired. We have two, a part-time position in AES consultant, a core director, those positions would be cut. We looked at the insurance adjustment from, because when we met last time, the insurance numbers were higher, so we pulled that out. And then if you looked at the concept of applying the TRS proposal, we could come up with $322,000 of savings. And we met last time, our gap between getting to a program that we felt was appropriate for kids and meeting the tax cap limit was over a million. So we can back out that 322,000, and if you go to the next slide, you can see that the bottom line is our difference now is 697,000 between getting a 2% formula budget and, and that's the gap that we have to face to get to that. So those adjustments have made some progress, but we're still short about almost $700,000. So there's three scenarios I'm just going to throw out there and people can discuss because, as I said before, 98% of our spending plan is on track, so there's, you know, we've got to find some areas to cut. So the first scenario is, and if you look at, remember the assumptions I talked about, the assumptions is, we have the same number of kids, we need to provide as much as we can the same number, the same program with the emphasis on academics. With that concept, if we took out all extracurricular activities and athletics, we'd save about $300,000. We would still need to find about 14.9 reductions in staff. Now, this would, this covers all departments. We need to figure out specifically which they would be, but it would be in a reduced cleaning schedule. If we don't have athletics, we don't need two groundskeepers, for example. There would be, looking at transportation and any reductions there, any aides or assistants, teaching staff, it would take about 14.9, so it would definitely take 14.9 to meet that $18 million, 600,000 number without athletics or extracurriculars. Scenario two, we've got a concept that we need to offer something for our kids, how can we offer something for our kids that is some opportunities that are after school? So a reduced athletics extracurricular concept, maybe almost cutting it in half, and the focus would be on looking at what sports and activities do we offer that can be considered lifetime or lifelong-type programs? And you talk about things like cross-country, track, bowling, and golf, so those were the opportunities we offered for kids. It would do a couple of things. First of all, one of the challenges when you reduce athletics is Title IX, because you have to offer the same amount of opportunities for men and women. Both of these programs are co-ed. Right now, all these programs have co-ed teams, a men's team and a women's team. So we would not have any Title IX issues under this type of scenario. Most of these programs have unlimited rosters. So the cuts would not be there, and they would provide, more kids could be in these programs because you don't have a set number of people on a field at a time or at a place at a time. And then, once again, they support the concept that these are lifelong activities that people are going to be doing, they can do after they get out of high school or college. So there are things that they can always have, and if this is the direction that we have to go, maybe those are the areas that we should support in terms of doing that. So that's what the concept of this would be. But because we bring something back, it was, now we would have to find a total of 18 positions within all our departments cut. Once again, reduction in cleaning, looking at our ground situation, transportation, aides, assistants, and teaching staff. And then the final scenario would be reducing athletics, but eliminating a level. And the most logical level to eliminate is gender varsity. Most, most schools in Section 7, or majority of schools in Section 7, have either modified, have modified varsity and modified, and none of them have varsity and just JV. So in terms of where we are and trying to get as many opportunities for kids, is to keep varsity and keep modified, eliminate our JV program. It may also require a reduction in another sports program, we're not quite sure what the total numbers are in that, but we would need to reduce equally on the men's side and the women's side because of Title IX. And obviously, comply with that would be reduced offerings similar to the scenario two, where we reduced extracurricular opportunities. But because that would be a more costly item, we would now have to find 19.75 positions across all of our departments. Now, the other concept that we need to consider is a contingency situation. So if we put out a budget and it doesn't pass, and we put out another budget and that doesn't pass, we would be forced to go into contingency. And the contingency formula under the tax cap is different than the past. You cannot raise your tax levy $1 from year to year under a contingent scenario. So if we end up in a contingent scenario, we would have to find another $390,000 of budget cuts to have an acceptable budget. And that's not negotiable, that's the law. Your tax levy has to stay the same from one year to the next under contingent. Used to be, there was a factor you could increase your budget by, or your tax levy by, but not anymore. So that's, that's a big concern when you're looking at where we're headed. And that would be roughly 24 positions total and no athletics. In any contingency, there would be no athletics or extracurricular at all, and then probably 24 positions across all departments. Now, I want to have Mrs. Cossy talk about this concept because we've had a lot of questions about separate propositions. Can you put up one thing and part of another? The general rule is, and I know she's going to say this, is that whatever you do has to stay within the tax levy cap. If it goes over that, everything has to pass by 60%. But I'm going to have Mrs. Cossy talk.
As John was just saying, there are rules that come into play with the new tax cap that are a little different from prior. And there are basically four different scenarios, which you can put a separate proposition up for. I'm actually going to start with the bottom, they're a little bit different in nature and not quite as tied to the budget process. You can put up a transportation capital expenditure or a regular capital expenditure as a separate proposition as part of a budget vote process, because those are finance efforts. They're not part of your general fund, we would just be taking them out, putting them out separately at the same time with the budget, and you would basically be going through a capital project scenario where you would have to finance the expenses associated with it. You would see the change in the budget when debt service was incurred in the budget and aid was generated to reflect those. They're more costly because you have to go through a financing process, so it kind of delays the expenditure because you're basically taking the loan out and paying it back over a certain term, but you would have to pay all the fees associated with financing those. So those two propositions can go out at a separate time. They are only for capital building projects or for capital transportation expenses, and those are voted on at a 50% plus one, similar to a budget that's within the tax cap. The top two are a little bit unique in that they are basically propositions for additional transportation services, which generally, if you were in an area, you were going to look at contracting out transportation or something major that you wanted the general fund to absorb that cost, or you could do a proposition for an educational program. So we've had a lot of questions about, can you put sports up? Can you put extracurriculars up? Can you put this program or that program, or have, you know, basically a menu of things for people to go on? That, there, and I even, I probably am going to have to look at my cheat sheets because there's been so many questions on it, and it's very, maybe, in some of the cases, if you were to put a separate proposition out, and it means that adding your budget plus the separate proposition exceeds your tax cap, your budget and the separate proposition both have to be voted at the supermajority. So even if your budget is below the cap, once you add that separate proposition, they both go to the supermajority requirement. You can't, the state's basically saying, you can't circumvent the formula by separating. If they're both educational programs and they add up together to exceed the cap, then you have to comply with that. The other question has been, can you put up a separate proposition for all your extracurriculars and then your regular budget? And if the budget goes down and that gets voted in, don't you still have to do it? That's maybe too. You have the option. You're not required. So if you did put up the budget and it was voted down and that was approved, you could still include that in your next budget proposal, but it has to be still within the tax cap formula. So if you're going to include it with your second go around, if you're going to exceed the tax cap, then you would have to get the supermajority ready to include it. There's been a lot of questions on that particular item. I don't know if there's anybody in the room that...
Just so I understand, is what you're saying?
Sure.
So the options are, if you, let's say for Tycon Roga, with athletics extracurricular, if we put it out separate, and the total of the two meets the property tax cap formula, they'll both only need to have a 50%.
Yes.
If the combination of the two, even though one is, the main budget is below the tax cap, but the combination puts the other piece above it, they both have to pass with a 60% supermajority.
Correct.
In either scenario, if you put out the budget and it does not pass, and the extracurricular does pass, then the district would have the option of keeping the one that did pass within the budget, but when they subsequently went for a second budget, either the budget would have to be reduced, stay within the tax cap, or if it doesn't pass, by supermajority to keep going, I guess is what I'm saying. Or find the cuts in the budget to...
Yeah. So it would be, it would be optional to keep it in, basically depending upon how you are going to get the second budget approved to be in compliance with tax cap or to meet the voter thresholds.
Oh, I have another question. I don't know the answer to these questions, folks, this isn't a staged thing. Are you obligated to, if you put it in, are you obligated to spend that money on that?
No, not for educational program. For transportation services, yes. For educational programs, you may or you may not. Same thing if you vote on your budget and they say yes to the budget and no to the proposition, the proposition's gone.
Right.
You can't go back out again for just the proposition, unless you're going to do it as a capital expense. And since a capital expense can only be transportation equipment or building product, project associated with educational programs, one would fit within those legal requirements.
Did sports fall under any of those?
Sports would fall under educational programs though. Yep. Yep, sports, you know, any, really, pretty much anything we offer for a program would fall under educational programs.
So I'm just going to quickly review these again with you. I've done once, my reason for doing this is if you have a chance to talk to anybody of influence, you should hammer these points home. And I tried to do that in Albany last week with Senator Little, and I did get to meet the Senator Flanagan, who's the chair of the Education Committee. And I said last time, every school district in the state can claim one or two of these. I think we're one of the few that can claim all, and they're all detrimental to Tycon Roga. First is a state federal aid, I'm not going to show you the numbers because I've talked about it, but basically, if we're being funded just from the state level, from '08, '09, at the '08, '09 level, we would not have any issues with our budget, we would be fine. The second piece is, I talked about a study done by the Buffalo Business Review regarding combined wealth ratio. And I think, Laura, if you want to just flip the next slide. So what happens is, when the state looks at a district, they say, okay, we've got disparity between communities, some are more wealthier than others, you have a calculation that we're going to, if you feel you're more wealthy than someone else, we're going to adjust your state aid lower, and if you're not, if you're more, if you're needier or poorer than the other district, we're going to adjust your state aid higher. So if your combined wealth ratio is one, you're average. If your combined wealth ratio is over one, you're considered affluent, or more wealthy, and so they will adjust your state aid downward. If your combined wealth ratio is below one, you're considered poor, they'll adjust your state aid upwards. Our combined wealth ratio is 1.12, so we are considered by the state as more wealthy than other schools. But if you look at a study that was done by the Buffalo Business Review, at the details within the study, this study ranks 430... within the study, this study ranks four hundred and thirty New York State schools, I believe most of the schools that are north of Westchester County, probably even a little bit north of that, but basically upstate western New York schools. We are ranked, in terms of their study, one hundred and ninth out of four hundred and thirty, meaning that one hundred and eight schools are more wealthy than we are, and three hundred and twenty-one are poorer than we are. But if you look at the specifics within those numbers, next slide, Laura. Those are the, these are the, just some of the schools on the list. I gave you the top five, which would be no surprise to anybody if you know anything about these districts. If you notice, they have, this is their rank, the district, the number of students, their percent of students getting free reduced lunch, percent of students are living in a household that is below the federal poverty level, and then what their combined wealth ratio is. If you look at every one of those school districts in the top five, only one has a combined wealth ratio higher than ours, but every single one is significantly less in terms of their poverty rates, whether it be free or reduced, or percent of kids living in poverty. But the top five should be no surprise. The next three are some of our neighbors, just to kind of give you a little bit more perspective. Lake George, which is very similar in size, you can see the combined wealth ratio is a bit, quite a bit higher than ours, but they have significantly less poverty. Only sixteen percent of their kids, almost seventeen, and on the free reduced lunch program, and just over eleven percent that are living in a household that is above the poverty level. Lake Placid, very similar numbers, and once again, one of our neighbors, and they're ranked thirty-third. Haguenzer, another one, and you can see that their poverty rate is actually lower than ours, but their combined wealth ratio is also lower. So they're getting adjusted a little bit, going upward, and they don't have the same type of population of kids we have. So when you get to Tyconroga, you can see forty-eight percent free reduced lunch, sixteen percent of our fam kids are living in, under the federal guidelines of a household below the poverty level, yet we have a combined wealth ratio of one point one six. It takes to number two hundred and forty-eight on that list to find a school district that has a higher poverty rate than we do, and, period. Every other school between two forty-eight and one oh nine has a lower poverty rate, and most also have a lower combined wealth ratio. And the combined wealth ratio is supposed to compensate for that ability to pay. And then I just showed you Mariah's numbers, just because they're another neighbor, and you can see that their poverty rate is quite a bit higher than ours, plus the combined wealth ratio is quite a bit lower. Of that list of four hundred and thirty schools, there are three that have a combined wealth ratio above one and a poverty rate of at least forty-five percent. We are one of three. We're an outlier. The formula does not work to us, and my message to our legislators is, our kids should not suffer, our school district should not suffer, because we happen to be located in an area where the formula does not work for us. And, you know, I don't know where that's going to go, but that's the message, if you're talking to people of influence, you need to send to them. And if you want this data, I'd be happy to provide it for you. Next, we have fifty percent of our assessments are exempt. We're actually the fourth highest in Esses County, and that means that the exempt, that these properties are not taxed, we do not get any revenue. I'm not saying on that agenda. It can be volunteer for our departments, churches, et cetera. But from our understanding, that, those exemptions are counted in the combined wealth ratio, even though we can't garner any revenue from it. I think a bigger factor, however, is the state land that is located in this district. And we have a lot of it, whether it be forestry or whether it be campsites. And the example that I use is the Rogers Rock campsite. The state will argue to you that the, we are only paying taxes on this part of our land because this is how it's used. So forestry land can be used for forestry, therefore it shouldn't be taxed as if it could be commercial or residential. I'm not going to argue with that. For the Rogers Rock campsite, I would submit, is being used by the people who are camping there the same way that anybody who has a house on Lake George is using their house. They're fishing, swimming, going, enjoying the, enjoying the lake. They're using it for recreational purposes. The assessment of the Rogers Rock campsite was ten million dollars. That's the entire shoreline, the island, and the property across the street. Basically, if you divide that out by acre, the state is paying three hundred and something dollars per acre for Rogers Rock. I looked at the property north of Rogers Rock and the property south of Rogers Rock, that's on Lake George, both those properties. The average per acre payment on most properties is fifteen thousand dollars per acre. Now, they don't all have an acre of land, so, but when you make it, you do the calculation of per acre, that's what these residential properties are being taxed at versus the Rogers Rock campsite, and they're being used, in my opinion, for pretty much the same purposes, to enjoy Lake George. So my push to our legislators is you need to take a look at how the state line is being used, and then assess it appropriately. And then finally, as you previously said before, we live and we had around that park. One of the big pushes when the property tax cap came into play was, put the communities to help you deal with the property tax cap, you need to increase your tax base. Well, guess what? If you live and you have around that park, that's a challenge. And we've sent out a resolution to our legislators. At some point, we need to have kind of a public presentation of that, with the schools, the twenty schools and communities have adopted what speaks to our uniqueness. So these talking points, please use, because they are, in my opinion, why we're in the predicament we're in. And we're one of the few schools that can say, they all hit us. So, next steps, we need to continue to examine expenses, programs, further community outreach. Our next workshop is the sixteenth, and then we have one the twenty-fifth. Need to continue lobbying efforts. I said I did get a chance to get down to Albany and meet with those people. I talked about the five talking points, but I also said this, and I think this is important. If you want to dismiss my argument or my talking points, if you don't buy that, then you find another district that has had three consecutive years of concessions, you find another school district that has not exceeded the four percent fund balance piece or comptroller's requirement, you find another district that has worked hard to make their employees better consumers of health insurance, and as a result, are seeing a slowing of our health increase. We've lost fifteen to twenty percent of our workforce. Some of it was through attrition, a lot of it was through attrition, which is okay, but because we have a declining population, whatnot all. We are looking at services, we're participating in shared services, we're looking at consolidation studies, we're doing everything you ask us to do, and our kids are being penalized because we're playing by the rules. So that was the message that I kind of took. And once again, I would use that if you have an opportunity to talk to them as well, in addition to those talking points, those other items. And, you know, the other kicker is mandate relief, and we haven't seen much of that, and I'm not sure if this budget agreement will have any of that in there, but we'll find out. So after that, I'd be happy to entertain, board, questions, or questions in the audience.
Thank you. Now, if possible. Continue on with the regular, regular agenda. We're going to seven recommended actions. A, approval of minutes, financial items in preparation of tax rolls. One A, recommended motion that the Board of Education make any necessary corrections and approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on February twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. And B, authorize the transfer of funds as required under Board Policy Number sixty-one fifty, budget transfers. And C, acknowledge receipt of the monthly financial reports. And D, acknowledge receipt of the internal claims auditor reports for the warrant dated February twenty-fifth, two thousand thirteen, and the warrant dated March fifth, two thousand thirteen. And E, acknowledge the receipt of the schedule of bills for payment, and there's an enclosure on that. And then we'll go to two. Recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the authorization of the Essex County Real Property Tax Department and the Warren County Real Property Tax Department to prepare the tax rolls and bills for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year for the Tyconroga Central School District. And then we'll do three. Recommended motion that the Board of Education award the following bids from the St. Lawrence-Louis Bosse's cooperative bid for the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school year for fuel, oil, propane, gasoline, and ultra-low sulfur diesel, as those are listed below. And I need a motion on one through three, please.
Sumo. Second. Comments? Mrs. Cossi had to leave, her daughter's sick, but I know she emailed with a word on the fuel pieces, the bids, and this was the best, I think, way to end on that. This is the best we could give.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion, those motions carried. We'll continue with B personnel. One recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Susan Shalmedine as teacher aide effective April seventeen, two thousand thirteen, pending successful completion of her probationary appointment. Two A, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Jean McKee and Michelle Goutreau as chief election inspectors for the personal registration day on May fourteen, two thousand fourteen. And B, approve the following chief election inspectors, inspectors of election, and custodians of the voting machines for the budget vote and election of Board of Education members on May twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, and those are listed for Tyconroga and Hague. And then three, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following substitute for the two thousand twelve, thirteen school year pending fingerprinting and approval by the State Education Department. Shay Lee Handy, as a food service helper, and you have an enclosure on that. Four, recommended motion that the Board of Education approve a leave of absence for Jody Sutton as a social studies teacher to be paid from her sick leave, if available, effective Monday, March eighteen through Friday, April twelve, two thousand thirteen, under the Family and Medical Leave Act, with her return to work on Monday, April fifteen, two thousand thirteen. There's an enclosure on that. Five, recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation for retirement purposes of Bonnie V. Davis as a librarian, effective July one, two thousand thirteen. Enclosure on that. And six, recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the resignation of Angela Baker as a part-time occupational therapist, effective March twenty-eight, two thousand and thirteen, and enclosure on that. And then do a motion on personnel, please, B.
Sumo. Second.
Any comments on any of them?
Certainly sent out letters to Mr. Davis' retirement, and just in case the board, just for clarification, Ms. Shalmedine is, works at Saint Mary's School, and they get a portion of our Title I monies, because they are a private school, a school within our district, so they're entitled to that, and so she is an aide in that building. And there was a letter from Sister Sharon, I think, in your package. Unless there's any other questions?
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We'll go on to C, new business. Accept the donation from Kai Turner. One recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the donation of two hundred dollars from Kai Turner to the Tyconroga Central School District, effective March nineteen, two thousand thirteen. D, new business. Accept the donation from Nancy Hemthorne. One recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the donation of fifty dollars towards laminate materials to the Tyconroga Central School District, effective March nineteen, two thousand thirteen. E, new business, and accept an anonymous donation. One recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the anonymous donation of one hundred dollars toward the two thousand thirteen Minds On workshop to the Tyconroga Central School District, effective March nineteen, two thousand and thirteen. F, new business. Accept an anonymous donation. One recommended motion that the Board of Education accept the anonymous donation of thirteen thousand two hundred forty-nine, two hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-nine cents to support the associated solo artist's performance at the Tyconroga Central School District, effective March nineteen, two thousand and thirteen. And G, new business. Recommendations on the Committee on Preschool Special Education and Committee on Special Education. One recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the following recommendations from February fourteenth, two thousand thirteen, through March twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. Let's do a motion on that new business from one through G one, please.
Sumo. Second.
Just every board meeting, we seem to get more and more donations from people. Be anonymous, or just, every little bit has helped and helps our kids. That last one, I believe, is paid for the program that I talked about during the budget presentation, in terms of, you know, trying to find ways to support our kids, so you can see what that effort was worth.
Questions for anyone? Make sure we get the thank you notes for those that are not anonymous. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. H, new business. Approval of the two thousand thirteen, fourteen school calendar. One recommended motion that the Board of Education approve the enclosed two thousand thirteen, fourteen school calendar for the Tyconroga Central School District, with the first day of school for staff on Tuesday, September three, two thousand thirteen, and first day of school for students on Thursday, September fifth, two thousand and thirteen. There's an enclosure on that. I, new business. Recommend a, excuse me, an amendment of the superintendent's contract for two thousand thirteen. One A, recommended motion that the Board of Education amend the agreement of July thirteen, two thousand twelve, between the Tyconroga Central School District and Mr. John C. McDonald, Jr., superintendent of schools, and approve the reimbursement of college tuition and travel expenses to and from Columbia University for the fall of two thousand and twelve and spring of two thousand and thirteen. And we need a motion on H, now, please.
Sumo.
The first one, the school calendar, next year is a long school year. We actually start right at the beginning of September and end right at the end of June. So we felt that it was, in the past, it would come in before, early or late August, but with the length of the school year, we felt it was better to come in after Labor Day. And then the other piece is that there are seven, there are seven snow days built into the Bosse's calendar. One of the vacations called for us to come back to school after the Christmas break on a Thursday. The group felt that we're better off educationally having a full two-week break and taking two days off the snow days, and if we need to snow day, give back, because there's some other places we could find. Coming back on a Thursday after over a week break is, we felt educationally we'd better not to do that. So that's the nuances. And I don't know if you want to comment on I or...
No, it really was just cleaning up the contract and getting it signed, which we did do a very good job of finishing that last year, my fault. Need a, had a motion, and a second on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Now we'll go to eight informational items.
Activity, yep. Activity reports in all three buildings. If you're free tomorrow night, the science fair is taking place at the middle school in the Fishbowl. Had a great career day today up there, which was nice. We're a little behind, I think, I love Mr. Alka coming up on the spring sport piece because of the weather, but eventually we'll get there. I don't know if I want to put you on the spot, Heather, do you want to say anything about the Hawaiian trip?
I think at some point, when I get photos all put together, presentation, it's bringing it forward.
Well, I appreciate you doing that.
It was great. It was very successful. Thank you.
We have some volunteer coaches for JB Softwater Mullen, and Andy Cool is volunteering for golf. They are certified coaches. We have a transportation report from Mr. Viglotti, and that outlines some of the concerns or needs that he's looking at with department. A technology report from Mr. Cossi on what's been happening with Tyconroga and our partnerships with school.
Anything, Mr. Alka, anything to comment on?
I have nothing new, other than let's play for nice weather next week. Otherwise, we're really going to be behind the eight ball with the board.
The one thing I would mention... for quite, quite a long time, but if you take a walk out here, and, and here and see the, the stairwell, and, looks good.
We need to have a discussion on the representation at the middle school promotion on June 20th, and the high school graduation on Saturday, June 22nd. So, we need some volunteers.
I don't have a volunteer. I'll, I'll do.
Both?
Sure.
Okay. Two volunteers.
You've got one.
Middle school.
Middle school.
And high school.
Okay. You want to share?
Well, I can take it, or, do you want two, or just one?
Two. Well, on middle school, we only need one. You're welcome to, if you'd like, on the high school, we'd like to have two.
Probably, and I'll work it out.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry.
Thank you very much for volunteering.
No gowns.
No. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And then we have future items, and we go from there, from March 21st right through the end of the year to the 22nd of June, which you obviously can read by yourself. And, and then with public participation, anyone else would like to address the board, and, before we go to executive session? Mrs. Marshall or Mr. Smith, either one?
Please. Okay. Mrs. Marshall.
I just wanted to invite you all to the Science Fair's Friday night, there are a lot of kids involved, and Heather is beginning her new project of raising the money so we can have some kids from the middle school to Hawaii next year. So bring your wallet, and there's gonna be lots of big bits and biddies, and a lot of awesome projects on this Friday night.
Throughout the middle school, throughout all the middle school and the Fishbowl, so it's going to be exciting.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. We're in the middle of another devastated budget process, obviously, and just as a side note, is it interesting that the deficit is basically what the state is taking away from us, the $600,000, $700,000? The scenario is I would present tonight would decimate our school district, and severely harm the Ticonderoga and Hake communities. The district belongs to taxpayers of those two communities, they need to decide what type of school district we should have, and what opportunities will be provided. In order to make major decisions like this, people need information. First, the Ticondero Futures Association urges you, the board, to investigate exceeding the tax gap in order to keep our district, as the teacher says, well-known all around the state. This will save opportunities for our children, let's let the taxpayer decide where our school will play. One area that would help the public is to break down the numbers and give them a range of what it would cost them per year and per, per month, so that they can actually look at their own budget to decide if they can afford it. And really, most of, most of the mortgage, mortgage owners and taxpayers, they're looking at less than a tank of gas per month in order to do some of the things that we still do. With that in mind, the Ditches Association, I know, forwarded to Mr. McDonald, he forwarded to you guys, a letter that the NERB Board sent to their taxpayers. With information, in the letter, it was, stated choices that have been made and the costs associated with it, we urge you to follow a simple format to inform the taxpayers where their board of education stands. I think these three scenarios should go right to the public. They need to be, they need to know this right now, because, I, Mr. McDonald forwarded this to me this afternoon, and I was shocked by, by seeing it again tonight. I also think you should send this to, this presentation to center a little, and center the planning, and to see exactly what's happening in those schools. But again, I urge you guys, please, investigate the tax gap, let, let the taxpayers say what kind of district they want to have. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Smith. Anyone else? Just a quarter?
You know, yeah, you know, it's kind of, you know, hitting on points, Rick, sit on, but, you know, I, I looked up before I came here and said, okay, what's the median home price in Ticonderoga? What was it this past year, and what did it sell at? You can, you can find that information. And it was $132,000, the average home price in, in, it was sold last year. Well, if you took out Star, which is a $30,000 exemption, you're at $100,000. Our tax levy's $10 million, and so a $100,000 homeowner, on every 1% on the tax levy, is paying about $10 more on a 130,000 home. So if you, you know, we're talking about a 6% tax levy and keep it under the 2%, if we could add, I think, and I'm sure all of you agree, all those scenarios are lousy. But if you could, kind of, going back to what Rick says, investigate going above the 2% tax levy. Because if you look at going, say if we, I think, John said we needed, I think we're $697,000 short. Okay, say there was some cuts in there that aren't impacting the kids as much, and they live, you know, end up being a couple hundred thousand. If the state could come up with more money, you know, through this deficit reduction, you know, having that be less. And then if we could, if you're looking at another $300,000 on the tax levy, which would be above what we're already talking about, you'd keep it under double-digit, we'd probably be in the 9% range, something like that. But the difference between that 2% tax levy and, and going above it would be about $3. If, I'm sorry, it'd be about, it'd be about $30 for a $100,000 homeowner. $30 a year, this isn't a month, a year. So you're talking, what, $2.50 a month? And you have to ask yourself, is that worth it? Is it worth it? And ask yourself, please ask yourself that tonight, when you leave here, is it worth $2.50 a month? And, and, I mean, we've gone with these numbers with Lori, but, you know, I'm sure they're, they're right, as far as a 3% is about $30 for a $100, or a $130,000 homeowner. If you ever have a tax exemption, the enhanced Star tax exemption, they get a $60,000 reduction off that $130,000 home, so now they're only, they're paying taxes on $70,000. So they're, they'd be paying about $700 a year, theirs would be even less. So if you're looking at that 9% range, I'm sure we could find some more savings in the district, not to be so, have our kids so impacted, about $2.50 a month, beyond, of course, the 6.23 we're already talking about, or two, so you're in that 9% range. We passed 18% budgets in the early 2000s, fit back-to-back, when, you know, of course there were better times. But, you know, if you look at, you know, all of the savings that we have done in this district since 2008, our salaries, if you look at the salaries of the, at least the teachers, that has gone up $40,000 in five years, as far as what the salaries go to, to the teachers in this district, $40,000. It's less than, like, it's a 17th of a percent. So for $2.50, that's what we're asking, extra, to go to the taxpayer, and they may end up saying no. And I don't understand, we need 60%. But I think if you believe in it as a board, and you go to the public with that, and explain it to them that way, they understand that, instead of 3%, you know, it's, it's a 9% tax levy. No, here's what the state has done to us, this is the, the deficit reduction number, and if we could have that back, yes, they want to transfer, he was a taxpayer, I think, and if it's explained that way, and what kind of programs we'd be losing without that extra, you know, 3%. I, I would, I would hope that they come and vote for it. But I, we need you to at least consider that and look at that option. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All right, we need to adjourn to executive session, and need a motion on that, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming.